Call Metropolis City Council's order Monday, January the 26th, 2015. Call and roll please.
Barfield.
Here.
Carol.
Here.
Kurzine.
Pleasant.
Daughtry.
Here.
McManus.
Here.
Midnight.
Here.
And Mizell.
If you'd please stand for a pledge of allegiance and remain standing prepared.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come tonight thanking you for the many blessings that you have given each and every one. Be with this council, dear Heavenly Father, that each decision that we make will be for the betterment of the community. Be with our community, dear Heavenly Father, with the ones that have lost loved ones. Be with the sick, dear Heavenly Father. Be with the caregivers. Be with our armed service personnel on foreign ground and here in the United States. Guide and direct their lives and bring them safely home to their families. They ask in thy precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Need a motion to approve the minutes of the 1:12:15.
I'll make a motion now.
Motion by Mr. Kurzine. Second by Mr. McManus. Call and roll please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Kurzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
First item will be a general citizen's request. Mr. Whitley, who's actually in, and Ms. Whitley.
I had some handouts for you if you'd like to kind of listen around while I speak. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the council. Appreciate it. I'm Dan Whitley. I live here in Metropolis at One Hickory Lane. I've got a presentation I'm sending around and I'm going to start on page two. And it may look like there's a lot of information here, but I believe I can cover it fairly quickly. So we won't hold up too much time with council. Just to give you a general summary, on the evening of December 28th, we experienced electrical issues at the house. We contacted the Metropolis Electric Department and they responded very timely. They were unable to determine the exact cause. They advised me to contact electricians. So I contacted Shelby Electrical Service. And during the next three days, we tried to troubleshoot what the issues were. In Woodhaven, the electrical power is underground cable. Their transformers are on the opposite side of the street from where my residence is. It's actually on the east side of Hickory Lane. And on my side of the street, for the majority of the people on my side of the street are distribution pedestals. However, my property did not have a pedestal. We did dig down in that location and were able to find the splice joint between my power cable and the adjoining cable, which comes underneath Hickory Lane. And that would be my connection point. In troubleshooting, the city was very, service technicians were helpful. They redid the connection points of the cable into the transformer other side of the street. And Mr. Shelby and his crew replaced the in-ground splice that were in the ground. We did that and it did not help the situation. So to expedite the troubleshooting, we laid a new cable across the top of the road. Still troubleshooting, trying to find out what the problem was. When we laid the new cable over and tied it in, everything was corrected proper. So at that point, we knew that somewhere underneath the street was the problem with the cable. We approached the city and talked to the electric department, Stoney, if I may, I don't know Stoney's last name, so I just called him.
Mr. Barrett, he's...
Mr. Barrett was out there and looked at the situation. But we were advised that because of the underground cable, I would be responsible for replacing the, repairing the connection in the cables all the way to the transformer. That could be in kind of a precarious situation where I had to dig up a city street in order to go from my property line where the splice was located within the property easement, which is where you would normally expect to have your service connections, just like your water meters are sitting in your yards right on the easement and the edge of your property. We had no choice at that point, so we dug the city street up and I incurred significant cost in doing that. And that was completed on the 25th. We had to wait until after the holidays. I'll move on to page three. Some of what I've been explaining here took place. Today, I was able to reach an engineer, Michael Whittington. And Rick, I should say, Mr. Apple. I got your note on Saturday and I appreciate that. However, there are a few inaccuracies in it. In yours, you stated that there was never a pedestal vault in the yard at my property. In contacting the engineer, Amarin, who was over at the property, he was able to go into his archives and pull out his information. And you can pass this around. He sent me later, which specified that, in fact, there was a vault on my property at one time. His records show that. He was also able to tell me what the purpose of those pedestal vaults is to, each one of those transformers out there applies power for four homes. Two homes on the transformer side of the property. And then via the cable coming under the road and into that distribution pedestal, it also provides power to two homes. And that's the purpose of that pedestal, is to take the single power cable coming under the road and disperse it into two residences. And in my particular case, our property is a single residence on two lots. And Mr. Whittington was very knowledgeable in the fact that he recalled that the pedestal was there, showed in his records. And he also recalled that, and he suspected that the reason was, because a lot of them rusted out, he also stated that prior to the city purchasing those facilities out there, that that pedestal was removed, probably because it was rusted out. And it was typical and common practice for CIPS at the time. If there was a need to split off for two residents, and in my case it wasn't, they would just make a splice and put it in the ground. So that's what they did. In digging up my yard and identifying or locating the splice, we also found the original tag. And that's on the next page. It shows pedestal AA to transformer 11. That was the original pedestal tag, which would have been contained in that pedestal. Which, again, my contention is that that is my connecting point to the utility. That is still there when we replaced the cable into the road and redid the splice connection. We continue to maintain that identifying tag. So we were able to identify that the, there was a bad, excuse me, a bad neutral in the cable underneath the city street. That that cable, with the support of the letter from Mr. Whittington, is part of the infrastructure provided to the citizens out in our area. And the cable then that I splice into and the cable then on up to my meter would be my responsibility. But not the infrastructure underneath the city. And that's my point of contention with you this evening. I included some information here in regards to the ordinances. And the ordinances as due state that the homeowner is responsible up to the connection, point of connection to the utility. And I think that's where we have a point of disagreement. I think clearly from what Mr. Whittington was able to provide to me, that that point of connection to the utility is the splice joint that's at the edge of my property within that utility easement. And the cable underneath the road over to the transformer is, was defective and had to be replaced. I also make note on page nine that the electric department shall be supplied with an easement, satisfactory to the electric department from its existing lines to a joint adjacent to the premises proposed to be served. And of course, that's exactly where this splice connection is located. I get into the repair costs. I guess my point of contention is I just found it odd that as a citizen, I would be expected to not only dig up some of my neighbor's property on the other side of the street, but excavate actually the city street and dig a trench and then replace that infrastructure that lays underneath that city street. But that's what we had to do in order to restore our power satisfactorily. I do respectfully request the city council to please review and approve my request for cost recovery and expenses of the excavation and the repair and replacement of the power cable. As you can see here, I've listed the expenses, which between Shelby Electric Service and the excavator are just over $5,400. I've also included some photos of the area just for your own information. You can see where we cut the space across the road on page 11 and page 12. And in the course of making this repair, I chose to put an in-ground vault in at this point. Just when I thought that'd be a more practical matter, because we did a really good job, or I should say Tim Shelby did. It's just, I had a pretty good idea of where that splice should be. When they dug down in there, they were within six inches of it. So at this point though, I thought it'd be more practical to have a vault. So I put one in place. And that's where that splice joint now resides. And it still has the original pedestal tag on it, which indicates what the proper connection is back to the transformer. On page 13, I'm just showing you what the standard layout is there for Woodhaven. Both on Hickory Lane, White Oak Lane, those are the two examples. You have a transformer on one side that two homes connect into. You would have a pedestal that would normally, would typically distribute power to two homes. Again, I didn't need that and Amarin removed it and just put a splice in the ground. Also, one would like to point out that in the course of going through all this, I've looked at quite a few pedestals out there. And it's kind of alarming the condition that some of them are in. As Mr. Whittington said with Amarin, they've had quite a bit of problems with these things rusting out. And there are several out there that are completely rusted out. I show a picture of one. This is the one on the corner of Steve Mills' property, White Oak Lane. And it is completely rusted out at the bottom. You could put your hand, you know, up inside it. So there's some infrastructure issues there as well. So I guess that was pretty quick and to the point. But basically, I'm asking you to please review my request, review the circumstances. In my opinion, it's pretty clear that just like your water meters sit on the corner of your lot and then from there, you run your water line on into your house. But from that water meter back, wherever it goes, that's your municipality or utility that's responsible for that. And I feel that would be the same in this case and the same with the power that comes under that street. I actually talked, I was talking to Mr. Whittington and some of the other engineers. They said, well, of course, your connection point is on your side of the street. Otherwise, anytime anybody came out there to build a house, they'd have to dig the street up in order to get to the side. They don't want anybody to make that kind of, you know, excavation to the city street. Or you'd have, what I just did, you'd have all up and down that street every time someone built a new home. So I appreciate your time. I certainly appreciate your consideration of my request if you have any questions at this time.
I do. What was the difference in the size of wires that come from the transformer then to your house? Were they the same size?
I was told by the electric department, well, Tim Shelby Electric Department, it's a very heavy cable that comes under the road. He called it a 350 MCM. And the reason that cable is heavier gauge than what runs on up to my house, it's a four-ott running to my house, is because it is intended to be an extension of that transformer underneath the roadway to those pedestals. And it's a heavier gauge because it has to provide power to two homes, typically. As I said, in my case, our house sits kind of across two lots. There's only one residence there. So even though that cable was there and it was the heavier type, we didn't need that. But it was, from that splice point into my meter is what they call four-ott. It's a slightly less heavy gauge. You know, you're only providing power from that splice to one residence at that point.
Mr., you said that Amarin did the splice, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Is that where your problem is? Is that the splicing?
Well, we replaced the splice and that didn't fix it. So we filled it somewhere underneath that street. We also replaced the ends. The city service techs guys re-cut and put new ends into the transformer, hoping that maybe, you know, the easy fix would be just to do that, replace the ends on one or the other. But that didn't fix it. So they all said that somewhere in between that transformer, under that road, and prior to it getting to that splice point, something went bad. And I also know that, you know, had everybody tell me that it doesn't take much. A little nick in the coating on one of those cables could, by anything, or just over years of that roadway, you know, pushing down on it, once it gets nicked within a year or two, it's going to swell up and you're going to lose your ground. And that's, in that case, you know, I think that's likely what happened. Somewhere in that cable, because we put a new splice in and that didn't help it.
Mr. Whitley.
Yes, sir.
In your presentation, you indicated that there was a pedestal there.
Yes, sir. It's in that memo.
Okay. But then you said that, who took it out?
CIPS at the time, they called Amarin now.
Okay. So Amarin took out the pedestal.
Yes. They, what he...
I mean, did they, did they provide you with some kind of statement to that effect?
Yes, sir. You should have it in front of you. It's the letter from Mr. Whittington.
Okay. Well, I haven't read all this yet. I'm just asking. So we have something here that says...
Yes, sir.
That they removed the pedestal.
Yes, sir. And they also said that would be standard practice for them. And the reason they'd removed the pedestal was because my residence bridges over two lots. There was no longer a need to have a distribution pedestal for my property on my side of the street because there's only one residence.
The one thing that I noticed out there looking around, there was four different types of pedestals there that does the same function. There's a plastic one, there's some bigger ones, there's some smaller ones. And there was several of them. One of them out there, I just, I put my hand on it and I thought it was going to fall plum over. It is, several of them out there are in extremely bad shape. So I can see to where one would rot and do pretty easy. It's not, it's cheap, that's all it is. And like I say, I've looked around and I've found four different types of pedestal boxes. So... Most of them that's put in today is fiberglass. Mr. Whitley, where'd you find the pedestal tag? I'm just curious.
Well, it was attached there at the splice joint at the edge of my yard when we dug it up. I took a picture.
Oh, okay.
And as I said, when I talked to Mr. Whittington, he said, oh, I know there's a pedestal there. He said, and he said there'll be a tag on it. And he said that it would be very common for us. He wasn't exactly certain why the pedestal removed, other than he knew two facts. He knew that we no longer needed a pedestal. And he hypothesized in the memo, he says, probably rusted out. They had a lot of problems with those. And it was more expeditious and less expensive for me as far as CIPS goes. And I'm calling that to their expense. Rather than go to the expense to put a new pedestal in when one wasn't needed because there was just one residence, they typically would just do what they did. They spliced into my cable that led from there to my house and put it in the ground. And he said that was their common practice and they still are doing that to this day. So it's just, if we didn't have two lots and there were two residents there, there'd be a pedestal there. Because that would be your power, your connection point to the utility. And that's where you would provide. So that's basically my contention is that is my, within that easement, edge of my property, that is my connection to the utility. Anything from there back to the transformer is part of the infrastructure in providing power to the residents out there. So that's basically where I'm coming from. And therefore, I respect for your request that you review and hopefully approve my request to be reimbursed. I also have copies of the, two invoices. One from KTSA, the electric company, and one from Quinn, the excavator. If anyone would like to have a copy of that, we're here to review. Are there any other questions?
One of its common practice there that those are not putting conduit?
I can tell you that what we dug up and what we were dealing with was not in conduit. I can also tell you that I put a three-inch conduit in, in addition to adding the vault. Because, and I also had them, I also had them put in an extra-large size. And they put a pull cord in it too. Because I thought, if I ever sell that lot next door and somebody wants to build a house, we will not have to dig that city street up again. That cost me a little bit extra money, but we're talking 50 or 60 bucks, guys, to put in that conduit. So now, you could literally go there, tie in that transformer, pull you another line through, and make a splice and provide to another house. I don't foresee that ever happening, but it just seemed practical to me. I've got kind of an engineer, I'm not a great engineer, but I've got kind of an engineering background. So I kind of look at it and say, this makes sense. This is how it'll be fixed, at least from my standpoint.
Probably is, is from your splice to your home, is it in conduit?
Yes, sir, it's not. Again, you're probably talking about 50 or 60 dollars worth of conduit. Where you could pull, you know, and if you had a problem, you could pull the old cable out and pull the new one in all in one shot, you'd be done. You wouldn't be digging up the road to city street or my yard. So if I ever get to that point, I've now got a vault that I can go to. If I ever had to replace my cable, you can be assured that I would take care of that, be at my expense. And I would put it in conduit so that no one ever has to, you know, be faced with digging up the entire yard again. It just makes common sense. And that's really all I'm asking for here is your consideration. I think it's common sense that that power connection should be at the edge of my property. And that's all I'm asking for. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it. Do you have a question?
I got one quick question. Just, because we, this is something I know we didn't know. Mr. Whittington says that Amarin also owned the service conductor running between the yellow secondary pedestal and the main base on your house?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't...
I mean, assuming there had been a pedestal. I mean, there was one time. From there back to the house, Amarin's saying that they have one.
Yes, sir.
I don't think we've ever understood that either.
And several Amarin engineers tell me that Mr. Whittington's been the most helpful. But they said that they owned, installed, and maintained the cable all the way to the...
Really? And that's why we don't.
Yeah.
We absolutely don't.
And that's not my contention here. My contention is from that splice.
Well, and that's my question. If we were to work this out, are you agreeable that from the splice or the vault or whatever back at your house?
Absolutely.
See, that's what, of course, you, I know you prepared a very nice presentation and I know you've read our ordinance.
Yes, sir, I have.
Okay. And the, I don't believe any city ought to be responsible from the vault, pedestal, or whatever you want, where it's connected to someone's home. I just think that's bad business to dig up somebody's yard. And unfortunately, the way our ordinance is written, it does say in there pretty plainly, to the ladder, to the pedestal, or to the transformer. You know, in all new homes today in the city, you do have a pedestal.
In my case, the pedestal was there, as documented by Mr. Whittington. But for practical purposes and less expense, there was no need for a distribution pedestal for two homes. So they just spliced, made a single splice and put it, and laid it in the ground. Which I guess has been good for, you know, 25 years.
Probably longer than that.
And I agree with you.
Well, our ordinance also says that we'll take it on or near the property line. Well, where Mr. Whittington had to take it to was 45 feet away. To me, that's not on or near. I mean, if the car's only 45 feet of hit me, it wasn't a near call.
It's just like your water meter. Your water meter comes in just along that easement to the edge of your yard. There's your water line and there's your meter. From that meter on into the house is my responsibility to put in my water line and connect to that meter. And I see that as the same thing. The utility, the utility should be provided within that easement to my property line and then that would be my connection point.
Well, and our sewer ordinances actually...
I haven't read those.
They're the same way the electric is. It's a property owns responsibility to go from the house to the main. Many, many places in the city, it's either in the street, across the street. Some, it's where the water lines are, but not always. And, I mean, for all fairness for everybody, you know, it was what the ordinance said.
Right.
You know?
I said, the only experience we've really had in recent times with this sort of thing, underground, we do a lot of overhead, we don't do a lot of underground, has been the Pheasant Cove subdivision, that's the new, and we made, we did the transformers, but we made the developer put in the pedestals. So we ran from the, and the pedestals are somewhere in the backyards or located. But they all had pedestals. I mean, we did require that. And I think that's where our experience has come from. Unfortunately, we bought something that looked like us, but probably obviously wasn't us because they would do splices without...
They have a little different way of doing it. But I mean, it certainly makes practical sense to run that cable infrastructure under the road and provide a connecting point on the other side of the street. Otherwise, every time somebody near build a home, they'd be digging up your city street like I just did. And that'd just be a mess. And it would be, you know, a cost and a deterioration of the roadway.
What's really, a little bit of confusion to me is too, is what, what Amarin says here, but what part or what actually did the city inherit? So that's, you know...
We bought their facilities.
As is.
Good and bad.
As is. That's the confusing part.
Agreement was as is. We bought it as is. It was. That's true.
But now, I'm also concerned if...
We wouldn't sell this because it's all underground.
Are there other people out there who don't have pedestals at this point?
Well, surely.
I think so. I walked that subdivision, at least Hickory Lane and White Oak. And I believe everyone else, there's a pedestal there. The lot behind me on White Oak is owned by Mr. Mills. It's empty. And then his home is to the south of that site. But there is a pedestal there that he's tied into. So if anyone were to ever build a home on that lot, rather than dig up the street and go over to the other side where the transformers are, of course, they would go to that pedestal distribution for two homes and tie into it.
Yeah, but what gets me is how many lines out there are not in conduit.
Probably, yeah, I know it's...
Well, see, Mr. Whitley's house, the street's built.
I believe it's built 93.
It's quite a bit newer than it is. A lot of those other houses over there were built in the 60s. But I still can't, I can't believe they don't have conduit.
Well, I know it's...
For the whole project, it would have cost a few hundred, but, you know. Well, you know, it all depends on who Amarin made put it in. If Amarin made the developer put it in, the owner put it in back then when they're building it? I'm sure they went as cheap as whatever Amarin would accept.
His comment to me in that memo was that they owned them, installed them, and maintained them.
Really?
Completely.
They said he was involved in it.
He said all project me.
They may have done it that cheap, but I...
Stoney actually talked to Mr. Whittington today. Stoney, do you have any...
Yes, sir. I'm aware of that.
Yeah. Do you have anything to add to this? I ain't going to speak for myself. I think this is something we're going to have to send back to the committee and talk about.
Yeah, I think we've got a bigger problem with you.
Yeah, I do too. I don't, I don't think we can make a...
This is a committee problem. This is where it should have went in the first place. Because we'd be violating our oath if we took up, tried to vote. We can't vote on it. We can't do nothing.
But we can look at it.
We can look at it.
I brought it up in a committee meeting a week ago. I brought it up in a committee meeting a week ago.
What'd you decide to do?
Nothing. I was told that it was their responsibility.
Well, that's it. They didn't make sure some of the committee explained it.
Like they are here. Yeah, this is great.
Yeah, this...
We've done a good job.
Yeah.
As I, I was not only doing this for myself, but I thought that I had enough information here that looked like to be valuable to you, the city council, but also to the other citizens in Woodhaven, that I felt that this was worthy of review and bringing out in the open. So again, I didn't know about a committee or anything, but I...
But it is, that's something that we need to look at because of how much more trouble we got. And we appreciate it. Mr. Whitley, it's been this long. Would it be permissible to you?
Yes, sir.
And as a citizen, and Ms. Becky, I mean, we've all known Ms. Becky for a long time, that we do take this back to a committee?
You have some time to study.
I don't think it'll be voted on here tonight. Not going back to Water, Light, and Street Committee. But we will do it, you know, as quickly as we can. Generally, we can have a meeting within a week or two and then we'll let you know.
Thank you, sir. That'd be acceptable. If I can provide you any more information or assistance, please let me know.
I think you've done just pretty darn good.
This is very, very clear information that I have got.
All right. That's all we can...
And we can scratch up my emotion off of new business when it comes handy.
Yes, sir.
I mean, if the committee will take any advisement, I...
Well, that's real. So Mr. Barfield, if they're as quick to say as we can.
We can have it.
We'll schedule it and discuss it.
Very good.
Any other citizen requests? Hearing none, we're going to move this right on. Next item that we actually need to talk about, as you know, we had a tentatively meeting set for last Friday. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
To make a trip to Sparta and Pinckneyville, didn't work out. Now we have some new dates. The 5th of February, the 10th, 11th, or 12th.
They were having trouble getting one. One of the plants has got, somebody's off on Fridays. That's what part of the problem was, trying to schedule Fridays. But it was, and I can't remember which town, but somebody's got people off on Friday. So it was hard. We had to back off of those.
Well, let me see. The 5th is on Thursday. 10th's on Tuesday. Tenth's on a Tuesday. Eleventh's on a Wednesday. And the fifth is on a Thursday.
I'll let, whoever, you just pick your day and then I'll get on if I can.
It would be really nice if, uh, if we could have at least two. Apparently I turned my phone on. I thought, I thought we was going to-
That's embarrassing to Bob.
Well, checking for my calendar. We forgot it was fired up.
We will, uh,
How about the tenth?
The tenth is on a Tuesday.
I can't on, I know I can't on the eleventh, but, but, uh, I can on the-
And, and I, I do understand, you know, that, uh, some, some are not going to be able to attend. We'll make it work either way. Uh, I'm going, Mr. Abel going, Ms. Settles, uh, needs to go, uh, and JK. So that's four that I know of. And, and we, if we can get at least, uh, two. And it doesn't have to be, I don't guess off of that committee.
No, nobody. This is open to anybody that wants to go.
Anybody that wants to go, so. And we're probably not, at the attendance of the meeting, we're probably not going to have a quorum anyway.
It's a majority of the quorum that requires you to have.
You probably won't.
No. Okay. Three makes a majority of the quorum.
No, you won't have that. You won't have it. And I'm, I'm hopeful that we have at least two. But if it doesn't, we'll, we'll take it and trust that our report coming back will be acceptable to the committee.
We'll go and take some pictures and stuff.
And we'll get a report back from the engineering service and stuff like that, just like we got here at our desk.
And that's at Pinkneyville.
We've got one, we've got a plan at Pinkneyville and Sparta. And we're going to do them both in the same day.
One system is similar to ours, has claricon and all that stuff. The other system's a little different than ours. They use a little different technology. And since we're looking at trying to figure out what's the best, how we update or what we do, this gives you a couple of different examples. And it also shows you how they've addressed maintenance issues and things like that.
Do they have the same system for-
Sim- one of them is very, one is very similar and one is different. But it gives you an idea of which, uh, you know, they can give you an idea of, uh, I guess they feel like both are potential for, uh, solutions for our issue.
Is it all about the same?
Yeah. They're about same, population, everything else, about the same size towns and all. Yeah.
So we ought to be able to get a fair idea of, and, and they'll be able to give us a fair, uh, recommendation of what we can do to upgrade our facility.
What we need to find out is they have cast iron pipe like we do. If you remember, when we went to this MIOX system, we had very poor water here. Rusty water. You couldn't wash a load of white clothes. When they told us that the MIOX system went to two seminars. They said in six months, this MIOX will coke those pipe and you'll have good water. It didn't take six months. It, it had three months. Now, my interest is now, if we change system, what's going to happen to these, you know, cast iron pipes?
That'd be a question we have to ask.
That's right. They need to ask that question.
And, and they are aware of that situation.
The reason I'm saying that is I may not be able to go. So somebody needs to ask that question.
We'll make a note and ask to make sure that we're not making something worse instead of better. So, uh, does anybody know for sure tonight that, that they'll be able to attend? If not, I just need to know, uh, in the next, uh, sometime this week at least.
Yeah.
So just, uh, feel free to let me know for sure sometime this weekend. Like I said, we need at least a couple if we can get them. If not, we'll just do the best we can do and I will know. And that tentatively is February the tenth. All right. As you know, the sirens, uh, were all going off on, uh, I think that was Friday evening. That was a, uh, accidental set off and stuff like that. Uh,
North Korean sweep.
Yeah. It was a cyber attack. So, uh, anyway. As far as another just little update, we are having some upgrade situations in Ward Two off of Ferry Street. We had a, uh, upgrade, well, it wasn't, it, it had, it had nothing to do with anything, uh, that we were actually doing to upgrade our system. It was actually a broken cross arm that had to be shut down. I think it was off for an hour and a half. Uh, whatever, Stony and the men, uh, worked on that, got it back up. But now we are going to be, uh, experience a few interruptions. We're going to try our best to get those as many as we can do on days like, uh, pretty days. Where the temperature is up, you know, you're not going to get killed as far as furnace and stuff like that. But we're going to try our best to get those done in the next couple of months, uh, before summertime hits. Where then we don't have to interrupt the, uh, air conditioning systems and stuff like that. So-
Are we talking about both the repairs or are we talking an hour or two?
Upgrade, hour, two hours at most probably in most instances. And Stony and his men are, are, are very, you know, they can't go around probably to every, uh, house. But Stony is going to get, uh, and make a s- schedule as best as we can. And it will be posted in the media where that we'll know what's going to happen. Does that mean it's going to be exactly, I mean, if it's pouring down rain and stuff like that, you, you're going to have to come off that schedule. But, uh, business wise and stuff like that, anybody that's in that ward, if they, if they own a business and stuff like that, we will try our best. In fact, Stony and them will go to the businesses and let them know. We are, have a scheduled, we're going to be out for an hour and a half or two hours or what it is. And, and we'll make it as painless as we can. And Stony and his men will do the very best to make everybody, uh, uh, aware of when it's going to be and how long it's going to be, the best of their knowledge. So that's for your information. If you get any calls and stuff like that, uh, that's what it's about. So-
Mayor, in Ward Two, I've noticed they've been videoing or something on Ferry and Metropolis. Is that for the mapping?
I think that's for the gas companies.
The gas company, the gas company was in middle-
And they are going to do, uh, well, Frank's going to-
You're, you're correct. It is for gas.
Yeah. And they are going to, I talked to, I had a meeting with the gas company last week. They, they are popping the manholes and doing a lot of it. But they're going to make that, that filming available to Frank.
Okay, that's good.
And he'll be able to know wherever, I'm not saying ever, well, probably ever. Or, or close every connection of that gas and where our sewer and everything comes into that main. So, you know, it's, uh, it's going to be a long drawn matter for the gas company, uh, for certain. Uh, but it is going to be something that we'll be able to, uh, benefit greatly at the gas company's expense. And they're going to provide us with those videos. So that's a good thing.
Well, they might run into some of our raccoons we got down there.
Oh, my gosh.
Well, yeah, but they won't be disturbing, you know, and stuff like that. Uh,
Hope not. They'd be in my house if they found.
I think, uh, I think that's the, uh, only thing that I actually had. Uh, we will have a resolution coming, uh, in from, uh, Harry's department uh, for the, uh, less old program and stuff like that. Will be on the agenda for the next, uh, meeting, just an update. And, uh, a couple of things that they're changing on the, uh, program. So that will be in your packet for the next city council. It needs to be approved. Resolution needs to be approved sometime in February. So, uh, I think that's all I have to add. Mr. Corporate Counsel.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, in your packets, uh, I know we've been talking a lot about electric. And one of the things we do every year, of course, is participate in a residential survey. That's how we have the chart that showed the fifty municipals. And, uh, so it's time again. I sent it off last week. Uh, we'll probably get results back in about, oh, April, something like that. Usually it's, usually it's April or May, somewhere there when we get the results. That's what it was last year. Uh, and, uh, we'll see where we stacked up in two thousand fourteen. Frankly, I'm very confident we'll be near the bottom again for two thousand fourteen. This always runs and lags about a year behind. Uh, also, uh, since we were working on that, we're working on electric. Tara called me last week and she'd asked a really good question and I found, so I went out and did a little research and found, uh, she was asking if there were any like statewide averages on electric for residences or if there were any nationwide averages, if we had anything like that, if we ever published anything like that. Said, well, we, I didn't have anything, but I thought I might be able to find something and no. But lo and behold, Ameren, who we all try to compare ourselves to, did a study last this past fall. And they showed that the, uh, their study said that the, uh, in Chicago, the average rate was around, uh, well, it's about thirteen and a half cents. Ameren, Illinois was listed at about nine and a half cents. Keep in mind, we were less than nine cents. Uh, Ameren, Missouri, which is, it's on the Cape Girardeau area on down, uh, uh, all the way up to St. Louis, uh, was about a little over ten, ten and a half cents. The US Department of Energy did a similar study. Uh, for Illinois, uh, the average rate in October two thousand fourteen was thirteen point one four cents, so a little over thirteen cents. Uh, it had been almost eleven cents a year before. So you can see, we're, we, we're well below even the statewide averages. Uh, and that's compiled by the Department of Energy. So, you know, if we're asked, yes, there are some data out there. We didn't compile this. I made it. This was Ameren's own study and the US Department of Energy study. So, uh, we are well below. Um, another thing we've been working on, different problem altogether. One is actually a little more complex. The, uh, the problem we've had posed by PTEL, okay? Um, and a lot of people don't understand, but PTEL, when it was adopted, was supposed to be this great thing that would save everybody on taxes and all. Well, that promise didn't fulfill itself. But what it did do, it pinched the taxing bodies, particularly when the state started imposing mandates. One of the mandates that's been imposed, of course, is with respect to pension funds.
All right.
And, uh, the two pension funds that we administer are the police pension fund and the firefighters pension fund. Uh, and one of the things that, um, uh, the state is mandated is it levy enough tax to not only cover our current obligations for that year, but to make sure that by two thousand forty, we are ninety percent funded. Okay? That's a mandate. They didn't provide any money for it. Okay? They didn't provide any relief in those PTEL counties for it either. So what's happening is, and I don't think we're alone, uh, in this, but you have to rob Peter to pay Paul in this instance. Because the state mandates how much you contribute. And, um, last year, it was, and I figured it up today. Roughly, our shortfall last year in two thousand thirteen, fourteen, that fiscal year, was about two hundred fifteen thousand dollars, something like that, twenty thousand dollars. This year, current year, the shortfall is three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And it's just growing. And at those rates, the, what will happen is pretty soon, the pension fund contributions will be bigger than the entire tax levy for the city. Uh, you know, I don't know what you do at that level. I mean, every dime you take in for taxes will go to the pension funds. Uh, at the rate they're growing. And it's not entirely just a function of, of, uh, oh, we got more, we got more people, we got older people. It's a function of the fact that even over the last several years, investments themselves have not performed. So investments that are hanging out there haven't earned the kind of money they used to, that's kept up. So it required more money to be put in, put in. Plus, since the nineteen nineties, the legislature has acted several times, which has improved the benefits. And I'm not, I'm not saying anybody's not entitled to a good benefit. I don't mean it in that way. But every time they put on a benefit, it costs money, but they don't provide a corresponding source of revenue. Okay? We used to have other sources of revenue from the state that we didn't have. It pulled away from us. And they've reduced some of our other sources of revenue in the last few years. So, um, one of the, we, as a county that has adopted PTEL, can't even meet the state mandate to levy. Okay? Because we can't levy enough. Uh, not that we would necessarily at this point, because this has gone on for so long, the gap has gotten pretty big. We couldn't make it up at once anyway. But if we don't find some relief to sort of turn the tide or slow down that, that growth of that gap, we're going to get to a point where, well, I, I think maybe our actuaries already projected, uh, in a few years, our annual contribution is going to be eight hundred thousand dollars in each one of these pension plans. Okay? That's unreal. Uh, that's, uh, I mean, it's just, I, you know, I don't know what we'll do. So, uh, where we started and I, I've, uh, I spent several days reading the statutes and, and God, if you ever need-
It is really interesting.
If you ever need, if you ever need help getting sleep, I'll just, just come see me. I'll give you some stuff to read. Man, uh, it's dumb. But, uh, we have asked, uh, we're, and we're in the process of asking our legislators in Springfield. And we're going to ask IML, ITIA, that, believe it or not, the TIFF Association gets behind every issue that affects property taxes in the state and, and either helps push if needed or, or slow down if needed if it's going to affect it. Uh, we're going to try to talk to all these folks as well as our legislators. We're going to try to push something through that would be an exemption to the PTEL statute. Uh, the way it's worded now, what you're limited is the, the lesser of five percent or the consumer price index increase without a referendum for any levy. I mean, you can't raise one levy. And you could raise one levy, but reduce the other if your overall aggregate extension stays the same. But that's the same as what we're basically doing right now. We're taking whatever money comes in on the general and just putting it over here and feeding the, uh, uh, feeding this one. It makes no difference. It's, it, and, uh, like I said, there, I don't know what you do when you, when your, when the amount you need is going to exceed your possible tax levy. The, uh, um, so anyway, what I was going to, one of the things we kind of misconception we perhaps had, uh, we really felt like the only body that adopted PTEL, uh, probably south of Springfield was Massacre. And actually, no, there's quite a few that have adopted PTEL. I want you to see that. So you'll have a, have a, now, that doesn't mean they're all being impacted, that they all participate in this fund or they're all being impacted to the same extent we are. But, uh, this came out, this is as of two thousand twelve. This map was drawn. Yeah.
Two thousand twelve.
Yeah. I mean, there may be some that have rescinded since then. I don't know.
The meeting I was in, I was told that the county in us, some of this collar counties, and that's the only ones left.
Um, so I don't know. You know, I thought I could ask, I'll ask Tom Henderson, uh, to see what he knows. Uh, but this is what I found online. There's actually a website for PTEL.
Wow.
One thing's kind of interesting I thought of this. There are very few that adopted this in the, after the earlier mid nineteen nineties. We're one of them. There were, there were a handful. Which tells you they probably didn't know what they were getting into, hadn't heard about what effect it had. Didn't realize it was going to wreck their school districts and other things. They just did it for whatever reason.
What about the ones that here says rejected the PTEL?
That means they had a referendum and they voted it down in those counties.
Okay. Where do they stand as far as the state?
They're not affected by it.
Okay.
They're not affected by it.
So, uh, it takes legislation to get us off of it?
Well, one or two things. We could do a referendum, but there have been bodies, taxing bodies in this county that have tried a referendum before to go above the, the PTEL limit. Okay? Uh, or we could do a countywide referendum to lift it. All right? But most referendums like that have failed. Uh, in the case of, if we just did a city referendum to see if we couldn't get additional authority above the, uh, say the five percent or whatever, you've got to determine what percent you want to go. And it's good that one year. So it was only, so, uh, so if you have to go say six percent or seven percent that year.
One time deal.
You, you do it that year and you can do it from then on at that level. But six percent or seven cents is probably not going to cut it. Okay? I mean, you're going to have to take small bites for a significant number of years is what you're going to have to do, which means every time you did it, you'd have to do another referendum. Okay? So you never catch up more than likely. Now, they've exempted certain kinds of payments from PTEL that you can levy taxes for. And oddly enough, it's a really complicated wording, but, um, for the firefighters, they exempted any part that's attributable to increases that they passed after two thousand four. Okay? But not the base amount, anything that was there prior to two thousand four.
But right now, it's county, right? A county.
It's county wide in that it affects every taxing body in the county.
Right.
If, but any, any individual unit of government can attempt to increase their- If, but any, any individual unit of government can attempt to increase their, a particular levy. For example, I'll give you an example. Several years ago, Brookport accidentally left its tort liability, I believe, one of its funds that it always levied for, off its tax levy orders. So it went from whatever they taxed at, five percent, two percent, whatever, down to zero, okay? They couldn't put it back on the next year without, without a referendum. Well, they waited, they forgot it for two or three years, so they had to do a referendum to try to put that back on. It failed, okay? So now they are without that tax, particular tax levy altogether, that fund, all right? So you could do it just for, you could have a referendum just on peace and fire, pension fund, okay? In, in, in just Metropolis, but you would wind up having to do that referendum about every year, okay? And as a pragmatic man, I don't think you'd ever catch up, you know, you.
If you could ever get it passed.
You would have, if you got it passed. And, and I don't think it would either. Most counties have found that referendums just don't pass when it involves taxes. And, and like I said, you couldn't pass all this on, but somewhere, there's gotta be some relief. The state can't keep passing mandates, putting it on the locals, and then at the same time tying their hands saying, well, if you can't fill it this way, you can't fill it that way. You have to fulfill it.
When you're just gonna, you don't have a place or a farm, have either one?
They're getting to, they're making it so that they're gonna force you to eliminate something. It's gonna affect other services sooner or later, is what it will have to do. So just to let you know, we are working on this, we're gonna try to get something introduced. This is that long haul process, you know, I told you about back last year. And, but, and we'll keep you informed. Like I say, I hope to carry some stuff to Springfield this week, because I've gotta go up and meet my ladies. But we're, that's, that's it.
It's not too long.
That's right.
All right, committee reports. Mr. Barfield, sir.
Yes, sir. Excuse me, I'm a little late. Yes, the Warren Street Committee met January fifteenth. We have these two items being forwarded to council. I will make the first motion to adopt an ordinance amending the Code of Trophoes Section fifty point twenty-five rates for electrical energy. This covers a three-year period, raising our electrical bills three point three cents per kilowatt. First year being one point eight, second year one point zero, and the last year being half a cent.
I'll second that. Just right, we're not trying to, to raise the rates on everybody, we're just trying to recover the break that we gave everybody a few years ago.
In twelve.
Yes, that's, that's all we're doing. And right now, if we had an emergency, say, just whether we had an ice storm, we've used our funds, given everybody a break that we wouldn't have the funds for the ice storm. And that's, that's basically what it is.
Yeah, the last one was a big, it cost us, what, over a million dollars?
We've actually funded one in nine, I guess it was, completely out of your pocket. And the one in, maybe the first one was eight, and the second one was in nine. Between the two of them exceeded one point seven million dollars. And one of them, we did get reimbursed, seventy-five percent of it back.
That was two oh nine, or oh nine, wasn't it?
Yeah, I think so.
It was one point nine, and we got one point two back.
Well, the only, the only, the only problem, and, and it's a great thing for the reimbursements, and, you know, we appreciate everything that, that happened. But even at that, at the seventy-five percent, there's a lot of things that you actually expend. There are those outages and things like that that are not reimbursed. Because there's some things that you have to do that are not reimbursable. So probably by the time you took the, what you spent, what was approved and what was not approved, I would say that we would have been very fortunate on paper, or actual dollars, if you, if you got reimbursed maybe sixty percent or sixty-five at the most. So really, you, you probably expended at least thirty-five percent of your own dollar out of a million, what it was. I don't remember the exact figure, but between the two of them, we went over three of them, not. So.
Very good.
So it's unfortunate and things like that, but Mr. McManus is exactly right. So we do have a, we do have a motion, we do have a second. Mr. Mizell, sir.
I, I'd like to go back, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Abel here to help me out with this, to explain some things, but we'll go back to a couple of weeks ago when we discussed this, we were talking about meters. And I said, I proposed that, it was five dollars, and I proposed that we do a two and a half dollar in order to take the pressure off of a lot of people. That's what this council did. Then on the next council meeting, it come up, and I proposed taking off totally the whole meter, the five dollars, adding a half a cent to the electrical to make it easier on the lower and middle income people. And that's what this committee has done. And the rumors that got out that we was gonna charge twelve cents and that there was gonna be a meter charge, which is not true. On this ordinance that we're getting ready to vote on, minimum charge of that five dollars again.
Okay.
Now, before you answer that, in conjunction with the next ordinance that we're, got the first reading on, it's got a proposal of twenty dollars. Now, where does that correspond to five dollars if you're on a, and the twenty dollars?
Well, really, they don't have anything to do with each other, okay? They're, they're two totally separate. The five dollars takes the place of what used to be seventy-five cents, okay? If you only use, you didn't use any kilowatts, or you used up to about, right now, or the new rates, forty-five, fifty kilowatts is what it amounted to in a month, your bill, well, back then, your bill would have been seventy-five cents if you used a hundred kilowatts, okay? So by now, if you get to, say you use less than fifty kilowatts, your bill might have worked out to be, say, four dollars fifty cents or something like that. Well, you'll pay a minimum of five. Because we were, we were, we were actually sending out three hundred bills a month.
Three fifty.
For seventy-five cents, and it cost us forty-eight cents to send the post.
Yeah, so you're supplementing that.
We actually, what you're doing, the only way this kicks in is if somebody uses like forty-five or less, probably, roughly, just as a rough ballpark, forty, forty-two, forty-five kilowatts or less, they would pay five dollars. Anybody uses more than that, the rate would kick it up, so they'd pay a little bit more. Yeah, yeah. That's all, it's not a per meter fee, it's just if you're a tiny user, or you don't have any power on, if you shut the fire off for some reason, then you'll still pay five dollars. But we gotta come read the meter, regardless of whether you're, you're off or on, we have to come check the meter. That's what that is.
Also.
But it doesn't have anything to do with the other.
Okay, all right, well, we'll get to that one then, here. Okay. Just today, tonight, Ameren's gonna raise her electric, Ameren in Missouri, ten percent. They've raised it, they've raised it five times in seven years.
Yep.
Where we, we haven't. Okay. If you read the papers, I keep, I keep up with a lot of this, it's Princeton, for instance. Where Princeton, they're having a problem paying their lights with their street lighting and so forth like that, where they're gonna have to maybe shut some of them off, okay? They're gonna have to change them over to L D lighting. We've already did like on Fifth Street.
All of our majors do.
All of our major, we've already, we've been conservative, we, we've, I said before, we put in our conversion and it's paid for. And we've got one of the best electrical systems, and with Stony back there, I give him credit for a lot of this. I'm gonna give you, for instance, people are talking about, and I, I'm the first one, if something goes up, I'll jump up and down about it also. But we're at a point where that one point eight cents per kilowatt is still gonna keep us below everybody else. I'm gonna give you, I'm gonna give you a, for instance, bill in Paducah. I, I've talked to some merchants today, okay? They said that their wa, their water, the sewer, and the garbage pickup was forty-five dollars a month. I said, well, wait a minute, is that forty-five dollars for all of it? That's all of it? And I said, well, I'm gonna correct you. For instance, a sewer bill over there is forty-seven forty. The wire is forty-four thirteen. Refuge is sixteen fifty, and then you've got school tax on top of that. Now, this electric bill, this electric bill was thirteen hundred and seventy-two dollars on top of that. And it comes out to thirteen point five cents a kilowatt, that's where it's at. And there's actually a six, what, fourteen six. I'm not giving excuses, but come the end of this year, if we can't pay our bills, then the electric, we're not gonna have electricity. If we gotta go buy a transformer, and again, I'm the first, I, I had never voted on to raise electric, and, and I can dominate that. But at the same time, we have to maintain the electrical system if people wants electricity. And we're still cheaper than everybody else, and I don't like, like Mr. McManus said, we're not actually raising it, but it's, we've gotta bring it up to where the electrical can sustain itself. And so that's kind of where we're at. And I hate it, but that's one thing that we have to do.
Any other discussion?
And we're, we're not just talking electricity like in the wintertime. If you don't have electricity, you don't have heat, because you don't have the furnace. So that is necessary for us to stay in the black.
Can I ask Mr. Abel to do one other thing? Explain that again about our electrical in the summertime? As far as how we have to recharge whatever we use? As far as, that's originally how we need to use more electricity.
Oh, oh.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Part, part of your bill, and, and this is the way it is with anybody that's buying wholesale, part of your bill is based on your demand, okay? And part of it's based on what you actually consume. Well, demand is your peak. Now, if you have a month, and we've had a couple of cool summers, you have a month, and almost every month, we'll have a, in the summertime, one good peak day, at least one good peak. May peak around nineteen, may peak around twenty, twenty-one megawatts. Some, I think the max we ever did was twenty-three megawatts on a given day. It's, it's one hour on a given day, whatever your, your one hour peak is during the month. That sets, you have a demand charge, and that demand charge pays for, in essence, it's to pay for a lot of fixed facilities, if you will. That's what pays for the, whether it be power plants or contracts, pays for the lines and the other stuff to get that power here, okay? It's not just the cost, it's not the cost of the power coming out of the plant, but it's the, it's the getting it here and, and all the fixed facilities. Well, if you sell more kilowatts, you're spreading that over a bigger pool, so your cost per kilowatt hour goes down. What's happened to us, and we're not alone, it's happened to everybody, in a cool summer, what always happens is, you get one day where you got a high peak. So you pay a pretty good demand charge that month, okay? But you didn't sell a whole lot of kilowatts, you didn't use a lot of, your energy cost is low, but your demand cost is high. And you're spreading that fixed cost that you have every month over less kilowatt hours all. You're, you're buying all you need, you're just buying what you need, but you pay more per kilowatt hour is what happens. And that's why, and of course, in a hot summer, if you have a lot of load, you're on there all the time, then you're spreading that fixed cost over a whole lot of pieces of the pile, if you will. You know, that's, you say, you know, it's, it's nice, our bills tend to be lower when it's good. Yeah, they do, they tend to be lower, but the cost per kilowatt hour is not necessarily lower because the, because you're spreading that fixed cost over fewer kilowatt. That's why some, that's why also a lot of municipals, as well as all your investor-owned utilities, have demand charges for their commercial customers. Because commercial customers tend to require the biggest facilities, the most transformers, the biggest lives, the three-phase power, and all that costs a lot of money. And so you, you have a demand charge that helps recoup that for you. We've never used a demand charge. Now, we're doing a demand study, and we're gonna do a demand study for about the next six months, starting hopefully next month. And all our meters have, have the ability to be programmed with a demand feature, and we can read them. We're gonna put it on some of our larger users, and look at what that demand is, and see if maybe we shouldn't add demand on some of the larger ones that require. It may also offer some opportunity to look at our commercial side, which is something we need to do, we need to think about commercial a little bit, and see if there's any way we can tweak that so that people that have a good load factor, that's the people that use it all the time, the most hours on a given day, perhaps there's a way to discount that rate a little bit. I don't know. That's something we'll call on our outside experts to give us some advice on, we don't make decisions without doing that. But I know that just the way public power entities are set up, the best rates go to the consumers, the residents. The little higher rates go to your businesses and your commercial industrial customers. Investor-owned utilities like the Amerens, the, the Exalons, Commonwealth Industries, their philosophy is just the opposite. Put the higher rates on the consumer and the lower rates on the, on the businesses. That's, that's just the way it's always been. So for us, yeah, we'll be looking not only at our demand and our, and how many kilowatts we sell, a good hot summer, we'll sell a lot of kilowatts, okay? We spread that fixed cost over a lot more, so the cost per kilowatt stays down. But we'll also look at the demand from some of our own customers themselves and what, what they use. And, you know, that may be something that we can tweak.
I think that would stand for business owners also.
That's what I'm saying, we would look at that from the standpoint, that's why we wanted to do the study, is so we can look at business owners.
Because I had a call, two calls today for business owners, and they're very concerned.
I, I did too, and, and I assure them that we would look at that, that Joe would take a look at that. And like I say, those with a good load factor, they're my, could, they help us, we might be able to help them some. Those with a weak load factor, that's a guy that basically, he's got three-phase power, he's got all kinds of generators, but only fires them up for about two hours a day, okay? And we gotta have it there all at once, because you gotta have the, it's like having that eighteen-inch pipeline to feed him for one hour a day, and then the rest of the time, he just needs about a half-inch line, you know?
But I hope we can give the businesses a break as far as on their utilities.
Well.
But we, and, and that's good, if you have to, I, I need something to explain to me, just like I've been. If you explain it to the people to where they understand, then that's kind of what we're doing here tonight.
It is.
It's not, it's not our fault that, and we're not really passing it on, but we've got to maintain if you want electricity in your system.
And this is a business, I mean, what we operate, you gotta stay in the black.
And I, I, and I hate it. I mean, I even hate a half a cent, but.
Without the action taken here tonight, we cannot assure the people that they're going to have electricity. We could get where we can't pay our bill, and they simply would not have electricity.
Like Princeton, he said they're gonna have to maybe curtail their lights, streetlights.
That's right.
Murray actually.
That's the university for days.
Absolutely.
That's the, that's the other thing that we look at, and I told these people today, is that when we meet again with the water and light, we're gonna see a way that we could, like the ballparks, if we have to lock the, the, the breakers.
Good point.
That's what we need to do, so.
We've actually talked to the light department, the police department, and stuff like that, we think we can help a lot of that done. Like I said, without.
We're gonna work.
That's a start, yeah. You mentioned that the L E D lights, we may have some money coming for the L E Ds, we may do some more L E Ds to.
And what we, the only way we can do it, we've got all the Highway forty-five coming in, it's all been converted over, and we'll just have to pick some different areas and different wards. It'll take a while to get it, but I mean, there's no reason why we can't do a pretty good size area every year.
What is our lighting going out on Four Lane? Is that L D lighting?
L E D, yes, sir. There was one app, too. Another one, I mean, I'm talking about app, not down, app.
That may, that may be connected to the one that's down.
I bet it is.
Several of them connect together, but any other discussion anybody wants?
I would like to make one comment. Mr. Barfield, I'd like to thank you and your committee for taking us back and looking at it and not doing it all over one year, instead of making the race over three years. I have promised people I would not vote for it. It's nothing against the committee, I want to pat y'all back for coming and doing a good job by taking it back and reconsidering it. But I, I'm gonna vote against it, just because I told people that I would not vote for it, so.
Well said, Mr. Barfield.
I think your committee will for at least have the courtesy to take it back and look at it from the other side. You did that.
I did, too.
Very good, sir.
And, uh, and I'm on that committee now, and, and we, we are not wasting money either. And, uh, so, I wanna clear that up.
Alright, we do have a motion, we do have a second. Is there any other consideration for comment? If not, call a roll, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Kozine?
No.
Daughery?
Yes.
McManus? Midnight?
Yes.
And myself?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, um, the first reading of the ordinance is amending and supplementing Title V, Public Works of the Code of Commerce.
That's it, first reading, yes.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Kozine brought that up in your committee, he wanted to see a maintenance fee or whatever. So that's what that is. And I'll go back to your, I just drafted it at his request.
Good deal.
Well, I'd like to give the, uh, the plug where it belongs, and this was actually a conversation Jan and I had. This was Jan's idea, not mine, but it is a very good idea, and I think it'll bring in some significant revenue. And what, figure her and I worked up was almost a quarter of a million dollars over three years, so, that's a lot of money.
And when certain, when certain sections are not paying their fair share, that does, that does take an impact on your residential and your commercial and things like that. You know, in a system like what we've got, everybody needs to pay their fair share. Uh, it's just the way it should be. So we can either take this, uh, it's a first reading on an ordinance amending. Mr. Daughery, do you want that in your committee, or do you want to let Water Light, uh, hash that out, or?
Yeah, they can hash it out.
Okay, so if it's alright with you, Mr. Barfield, instead of going to the ordinance, we'll take it to Water Light Street, and then bring it back as an ordinance. You don't mind putting that over on?
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, so this is the first reading. If we go over it, we'll, we have a discussion in the next Water Light Street. We already know we're gonna have two things on there, uh, and then we'll address it.
Excellent.
Okay.
Very good.
Now, without a question on this, I'm, well, I'll, I'll put it like this, start with, I'm a hundred percent against it now, I'll go against it tonight, I want to. Twenty dollars, twenty dollars.
We're going, we're going to have it.
What, 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 what's that kind of money?
What are you against, help me out here, I'm lost.
Twenty dollars, I'm against twenty dollars.
We're not gonna vote on that.
I got a first reading?
Uh-huh.
We're not going to vote on that.
Oh, I realize that, yeah.
It's just a first read, where have you discussed this?
And we're going to discuss it at the Water Light Street.
Right. I think you want to understand the twenty dollar per month utility maintenance here. That's what you wanna, that's what I want.
It's going back to a committee.
That's the reason, that's the reason we're taking it back to the committee. This is the first reading requested by Mr. Kozine, so. We're going to take it back and discuss that. Department heads. Chief?
Nothing.
Chief?
Nothing at this time, but I do need a need for a fire committee meeting sometime.
That'll be under Mr.?
Carol.
Carol.
The fire committee meeting, so.
Right, okay.
Please fire.
We can probably, uh.
It won't take long, cause I mean, if you wanna put that into something else.
We can probably put it on the Water Light Street Committee, as in Fire and Police Commission, or Committee.
Add that to the Water Light Street?
Yeah. Do it the same day, that way we won't have to.
Yeah. You tell Delia what you want on there.
Okay.
And she'll tell me.
Yeah. Uh, let me see, Stony, you have anything?
No, I don't believe it.
Alright, you can bring it up at the Water Light Street. Alright, Frank?
Nothing at this time.
Ms. Christie?
No, sir.
Any committee chairs or anything like that? Alright. All under Department Heads, old business. New business.
Well, Mayor, I've got an item, uh, go ahead, go ahead.
You both were raising hands and the mayor was looking down, I was trying to clap.
Okay. The item that I wanted to bring before the council is the bike trail at Fort Massack. We need someone to look at it, whether it's the sewer department or Megan Engineering Firm, to see if we need a bike, uh, a box drain across there. The, the, right now, if it's dry, it's had an inch and an inch and a half of water on it, the bike trail going into the Fort Massack. Right now, it's got about an inch and an inch and a half of mud on it. You can't ride a bicycle across it, you can't walk across it. And when it's not raining, it's water coming down Carter's driveway. Hopefully, we could talk to them and ha- get an agreement to put a box drain across there that will stop that water from going on that bike trail. And also, it's running into Fort Massack. Right, it goes down the side, well, about thirty, forty feet into Fort Massack. And that's in addition to everything goes out on Route forty-five.
Yeah, and I have talked to the Fort Massack, I mean, that drain is on them. We have one drain on us, but that actually drains onto them.
Uh, they've got a drain on them, and they've got, the one that's, the first drain is on the city.
Yes.
And, and the, the box drain would be on the city.
Yes.
But we just need to look into it and see if we can correct it.
Well, the drain that's there, uh, we clean quite often, but it lasts about two days.
Well, if it lasts that long.
And then it's covered up with water again.
The way it freezes, it's ice.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And I, and like I said, we have talked to the Fort Massack about the bike trail, you know, thing there, so forth. Then we've not.
It may be that Cotter and the metal people would help us with the box drain across there.
Might be, I think we could actually talk to river, uh, metals.
Yeah.
And, and then that water is actually coming off of Cotter, cause they put the water on there, uh, every day to keep the dust down.
And that's right.
So we keep the dust in, but we've created the mud pile.
And the trucks come out and they dropped their litter on the road, and the water washes it down across the bike trail.
Yeah. Okay, second.
Rich, what do you think on the FEMA problem?
Um, we got, yeah, I, we need, whatever committee you wanna do that in, uh, yours or Water Light and Street, one or the other, we got three proposals on the asbestos testing. I was supposed to have a fourth, but he hadn't got it in yet, and he, he just showed up late last week. Still thought I'd have it today, but, uh, I suggest we go ahead with the three we got. I get one more in, they're just proposals, um, but we need to probably have a committee so you all can look at those, and I want the engineers to take a look at them too, make sure we've got what we need in them. Uh, I, I'll go ahead, but as soon as you can send them, probably, whichever one you want to have.
When's your have yours?
They'll, they'll, next week sometime, we haven't made a date yet. But whatever, you know, we'll be with whatever it be.
What's with on his, do you wanna do that, or?
That's fine.
Make a difference in this.
Or tag them together.
Just for the bids anyway.
Sure.
Uh, we'll just have to, if we're going, we could have one very easily next week. Um, you're going to be gone this week.
Yeah, I'll be, let's see, yeah, they're leaving the tenth, that'll be following week, yeah.
Yeah. So.
The fourth then?
Yeah, we could do it easily enough, but this, four probably is Wednesday.
Probably fine, I could go ahead and send the proposals up to, uh, John Weider and, uh, Brian to look at, just to make sure.
That would be next.
Uh, they look our eye and see what they say. That'd give us time for the engineers to look over the proposals, if we did next week.
That'd be actually, uh, uh, February the fourth. Well, no, according to my calendar, the fourth's on Wednesday.
It's on Wednesday.
On Wednesday, okay, that's right. My ca- my calendar plays tricks on me once while over, but it's because I don't turn it over. So tentatively, uh, unless something changes, is that alright?
Yes, sir.
We're gonna try to work that.
That would be a Water Light and Street on the fourth of February. And we have two items right now on the Waterland, we'll tag.
We'll have, uh, fire and police.
Yes, sir. Alright.
Is the, is the found property out there, used to be found, is it, is it in the, uh?
See limits?
Yeah, but it, so, but it is not, it's not in the, uh?
Tip?
No. Okay.
Eric, what time did you say on the fourth, I'm sorry?
Uh, well, we'll start the meetings at one o'clock, but I, I'll have to decide which way we're gonna go with the committee meetings, but, uh, probably, uh, we'll probably do the Water Light and Street at one o'clock. And, um, see how much I've got going on there, and we'll just tag Mr. Carol's on someplace right.
Following them.
Yeah. And, and if there's something else comes up, we'll add that to it. Anything else under old business? You've got yours, Mr. Mizell, and Mr. Carol's taken care of, uh, what about new business? I think that was actually under new business, we bet it was. Uh, we do not have a need for the, uh, motion under new business. Miscellaneous reports, uh, we did talk to the, uh, medical cannabis, uh, folks. Right now, I think everything is kind of up in limbo. They did make some releases, uh, last night, or early this morning, at eleven o'clock or whatever. Uh, but there's no, there's been no permits issued at this time. And then I did hear late this afternoon that the new governor maybe even is proposing doing another,
Re-evaluation.
Re-evaluation, uh, to find out, uh, if the way they're doing it is the way they wanna do it. If it is legal, and then it will probably go to the Attorney General's office for a final, whatever. So, uh, I think there's about five million dollars laying out there in limbo, uh, and no permits yet. And probably, I'll say there's going to be a lot of lobbying going on, uh, for people that's dependent on the, uh, medical side of the, uh, cannabis, that probably are going to be after some legislatures and stuff like that, probably putting a tremendous amount of pressure on them. So, uh, maybe we'll find something out in the next week or so, uh, right now, we don't know anything, so. Under miscellaneous reports, that's about all I have to report on that. Financial repayment of salaries, payroll, and contract bills. So moved by. Wanted to flip a coin.
Who's the next one out of the way, huh?
Call a roll, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Frank? Carol?
Yes.
Kozine?
Yes.
Daughery?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Midnight?
Yes.
And myself?
Yes.
Payment of miscellaneous bills.
Call a roll, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Kozine?
Yes.
Daughery?
Yes.
McManus? Midnight?
Yes.
And myself?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item on, for my, uh, disappointment of the appointment, I, I'm not, at, at this time, ready to make that appointment, I do have, uh, uh, at least one more, uh, interview tomorrow, and possibly another one this week. And I hope that, uh, I will be able to bring a name before the city council at the next city council meeting for approval and move on with business. If there's nothing else that needs for the betterment of the council, we will need a motion to adjourn.
Go move. Second.
Motion made and second, call a roll, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Kozine?
Yes.
Daughery?
Yes.
McManus? Midnight?
Yes.
And myself?
Yes.
Thank you.